6:30 in Reed Field, Maine. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the second Select Board meeting for the month of October, October 29th. We will proceed with business. And the first item on the agenda is the minutes for October 15th, 2018.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or any changes that need to be made? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We'll go on to 19-041, which are the warrants. And John, is that you?
That is.
Thank you.
Did we bring the warrants?
I thought they were up here. Well, um...
Guess we'll do the warrants later.
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Or I can go downstairs and grab them now. It shouldn't take too long.
Why don't you grab them, but we'll proceed with business in a short time. We'll go on with Select Board communications. And do any members of the Select Board have anything they would like to say?
Go ahead, John.
Just an FYI to anybody that has a business in town. My wife received a letter from the state tax entity saying that as of November that all taxes would be due at the last day of the month. So I contacted, sent the bellows on it. Nobody in her office knows anything about it, so my wife sent her a copy of the letter and she's supposed to be, you know, checking it out and she's going to get back to us. But she said that just doesn't sound right. But she had the letter, so it's not so understanding. So anybody that's got that letter, it's not right.
Okay. All the board members?
Yeah, this past Sunday, actually, in fact, two Sundays ago, I had a chance to go to the landowner appreciation dinner for the Trailbusters. Just a great group of folks getting together to thank the landowners who let them use their land for their outdoor recreation. And it was great. There was a great meal provided. They did a great job setting everything up. It's great to see that, you know, that it's appreciated. And I know that Sunday mornings at 8 o'clock, the Trailbusters meet down here by the fire department and they go out to help fix up the trails, do some maintenance, look at, you know, clearing things that need to be cleared, et cetera, et cetera. And so it's just a chance for folks to help out. Even if you don't have a snowmobile like myself, you can still appreciate folks getting out there and doing it. And I think being outdoors is one of the best parts about Reed Field. So just to say thank you, just plug and say it's a great part of our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like to notice that or mention that the dedication for the new trail down by the Millstream Dam was dedicated on Saturday morning in the cold, and it was really nice. A lot of hard work went into that. And just a special note to Greg Durgan, you can try to throw us under the bus, but it didn't work.
Wednesday night, it's our first trunk and tree. It's at the parking lot in the Union Meeting House. And they'll be able to walk down to the library on the decorated trail. The Union Meeting House is also going to be decorating pumpkins that afternoon because they had to cancel this Saturday. So it'll be a joint thing where you can come and go trick-or-treating, decorate a jackal and... So I hope we see everybody there. And if you want to put a car in the parking lot, let me know.
Anybody else? I just do want to remind everybody that November 6th is Election Day. We have federal offices, the entire state legislature that's up for election, and the governor's race, and also bond questions, and a general question on the ballot. So I would encourage everyone listening and here to please vote.
You wouldn't know driving around.
No, you wouldn't. The flowers of signs are up, right? Okay, good. Would you like to do the warrants then?
I would love to do them.
Okay, let's proceed with the warrants then. Thank you.
Okay. So warrant number 18 and 19 for FY19. And by the way, I want to thank Dennis had to sit in for me a couple of weeks ago to sign warrants because I didn't do it well, but...
Can you give Dennis one copy of that, please?
Thank you, Dennis.
That's it? Yes, sir?
Thanks.
Okay. Warrant 19 for the amount of $406,827.76 is the regular warrant. The regular warrant includes RSU 38 payment and the first payment to Cushion Construction for contract services, which is winter roads services. Those are the two big ones in the warrant. Any questions on that?
I have on a different item on there.
I'm sorry?
I have a question on a different item.
Okay.
Central Main Technology?
Yes.
What did we actually replace? Let me see. I bet it... Was it our server?
That's in there.
And little ones for the Select Board?
Yes.
Awesome.
These are things that have been ordered but not delivered, so the check goes first and the order goes in.
Checks and mail doesn't work?
That's how that works.
Everybody has different billing practices.
That's right. And it looks like we've made the first payment for our winter road maintenance to Cushion Construction?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
And on that one, I will just say that all the pre-criteria have been met. The equipment inventory, the stockpiling of materials, and then the general ability of the contractor to meet the need. So we're ready.
Good.
Good. Can you have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the warrants as presented for a total of $420,317.32. Second?
Just to add...
Is that a different number than...
Yeah, just to add the...
The payroll.
Part of that warrant is to... 19A is for $2971.12. 19B is $3454.95. Those are state fees that are paid weekly. And then the payroll, warrant number 18, is $13,489.56 for the aforementioned total of $420,317.32.
And that's what's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions on the motion or further discussion? All in favor? Warrants are approved. Those are our only warrants? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I will move on to staff, town staff reports. Eric?
All right. As this is a second meeting of the month, I have no reports at this time.
Well...
That's well under your five-minute limit.
Well under.
Well, he took 10 minutes last meeting.
I did, I did.
It's been made up for it, thank you.
I think we're good.
Thank you, Bill. We'll proceed then with boards, committees, commissions, and departments. And I just want to thank the Library Board of Trustees for their minutes of September 5th, 2018. We'll move on to public comments. And so are there any members of the public that would like to comment on anything in general?
Evening. I'm Jerry Bly. I'm just here wearing the Jerry Bly hat tonight, no others. About nine months ago, I stood in this very spot and gave you all a very hard time regarding the proposal to develop the solar project at the fairgrounds. And so I thought it was only appropriate that I come back and commend you for restarting that process, which while I'm not directly involved, I understand is well on the way to citing the solar project at the town's transfer station, which seems to be a very effective solution. So hear, hear.
Thank you.
Secondly, I know later you're going to speak to the rezoning petition. I just want to express my general sadness that the citizen initiative process is being thwarted, I'm not sure the correct word, by the machinery of town government. We've seen so much of that in state government over the past eight years, where the citizen voices have been overruled by those. And it's sad to see some of that come to here in Reed Field. And I would just say that I know there's lots of points over the past several years that I think could have treated this whole endeavor in a far more productive way, and I'm just sad to see it come to this situation here tonight. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Jerry. Are there any other general comments by residents?
Yes.
Yes. Bobby, you going to speak to the item on the agenda later or just kind of in general?
I think I'll just speak now.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Okay. I understand that the planning board has already sent their consideration that the petition does not fulfill or agree with the Reed Field Comprehensive Plan. This is essentially the first step in the negation of that petition and its declaration that it's illegal or not going to be passed by your committee. A petition, we already found out, was valid. Number of signatures and the actual statement, that already was agreed upon. The question really was whether it was in violation of law. If we look at the petition and the rules of government and the rules of the state government, it says clearly that it has to be, in order for it to be declared invalid, it has to be in violation of federal law or state law. A petition allows the people to vote for a law. They can declare a law and they can vote for it. The Reed Field Comprehensive Law is a Reed Field ordinance. It's a Reed Field event. It's something that the people of Reed Field can vote for. They can negate. They can create an entirely new Reed Field Comprehensive Code through petition.
Bob, I want to respectfully make sure you're able to make your points and everything, but I do want to not have...
I know there's a time limit.
There is a...
Yes.
Yes.
I understand.
Yep.
You're declaring this law tonight invalid because it violates the Reed Field Comprehensive Code. But we know that Reed Field law can alter it. We can change it. It can be renewed through the petition. But you have chosen to negate it because your lawyer tells you it's possible through some dishonesty to declare this a state law. It isn't. And that is a repudiation of the vote of the people of this town. It's a repudiation of the local government. It's a repudiation of your job. It's a repudiation of the monument outside when you walked in for those people who died for the freedom of this country. Petition is a First Amendment freedom. It's one of the few constitutional elements of the state universe, of the state universe. I'm too much in the university. It's one of the cardinal elements of the Constitution of the State of Maine. And you're going to invalidate it. You will betray the state government, the state law, and Reed Field law. That's... That is an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment of your office. It's an embarrassment of everything. And I am personally upset because this violation of law you'll use because you're using it to evict me, to try and eliminate me from this state, from this town, from any part of this town.
Bob, could you wrap it up now, please?
I am.
Thank you.
I see. Leah will be presenting a petition or at least a statement later. And in it, we'll look at a way in which we can, we can look at the possibilities that this government, this local town government, can act in a democratic way. And that would mean redressing some of the things that are being done tonight. And I'm assuming that it will be what I think it is. If it isn't, I'll be very happy. What I would appreciate is if, and I have here the law, the law as it applies to Reed Field, and to your petition that you review it. If you find, if you find that this law is not what you thought it to be or your actions to be, then you can postpone this decision for one that actually speaks to a democratic resolution and not something that betrays the people. So if you'd like a copy of it, I have it here. Would you like a copy?
Sure.
Okay.
We normally don't take items at the table.
Give that to the town manager.
Yeah, just...
Give it to the town manager and he'll...
Yes. For the people.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in general to the Select Board?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we're finished with citizen comments. And...
If you want to, yes.
Are we all set?
Is that appropriate time? Yes, if you want to speak, you can speak. No, we should present...
She referenced...
Maybe not, maybe...
Bob wasn't either.
I don't know.
Bob isn't either.
I know.
We can move on.
We'll move on.
Leah, ask Bruce.
Well, Bruce, I have a nonprofit organization that I created and I just want to present it. Should I do that now or...
Is it pertaining to the business at hand or in general?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And you're not a resident of Reed Field?
No.
I'm willing to entertain listening to it, is the rest of the board.
Remember that amount of time...
Yeah, the three minutes.
Just...
It would be less than three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you go ahead?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Leah Hayes. I've started a nonprofit organization called Restore Reed Field. And right now, at this moment, we have three goals. The first is to support non-bipartisan candidates whose goal it is to restore Reed Field political integrity. The second goal is to expose secret meetings that exist to control or deny the public will.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry. The second... Did you hear the first goal?
No, I didn't. But go ahead.
Okay, I'll repeat it. So the first goal is to support non-bipartisan candidates whose goal it is to restore Reed Field's political integrity. The second goal is to expose secret meetings that exist to control or deny the public will. And the third goal is to support term limitations so that they may reasonably provide opportunity for all people to participate in their democracy.
So you would have it shorter than three years?
Three years, is that what you said?
That's what we run for now, is three years.
That would be a topic to discuss with the committee. Yeah, thank you. And I have flyers with information and contact numbers if anybody's interested. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to... Thank you. We'll move on to all business, which is to consider recommendations to take any appropriate action on the petition for rezoning in the Millstream area. Do I have a motion? From the floor, I mean from the floor.
I can make a motion. I just have to get to the right spot. There's so many pages.
Someone emailed it, Catherine?
Sure. I'm just, I can't find the right spot to start.
It should be about halfway through, probably.
I make a motion that we deny the petition to go on the ballot for rezoning the Millstream area due to the fact that we've been counseled by legal counsel that it would be illegal.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion among the board members?
Yes. First, I'd like to ask for people to just listen because we listen in turn in both directions. And this is Select Board discussion time. The process, as I understand it, with the planning board, there has been an appeal filed. And the Board of Appeals' process is to see if the planning board acted correctly in all of the steps that it took in evaluating the case at hand. I suppose pending what that appeal finds, we may change what we decide tonight. But according to the planning board and looking at all of the current laws for this town of Reed Field, including the Comprehensive Plan, it, the petition does... There were two things, I think, that went before the planning board. There was the petition and there was also a rezoning request. And that does not come up to snuff with what is laid out in town law. And then we have advice from the lawyer that says, and I think he cited six different cases in state law, where we are advised that this would not be a wise move to make since it has been put down at least six times in the courts. I think we owe it to the citizens of the town to take the advice of legal counsel when we asked for it to be given and not set us up for a court case where we would most likely lose based on precedent. And that's why I'm supporting this action.
Other members of the board? I guess I'll make a very general statement. I'm very disappointed in the fact that this is in front of us in a way that we will, and I'm going to vote for the motion. Denying a citizen petition is probably the most difficult vote I can cast. And I can only cast it because of the amount of advice that we have, both from the planning board and the, and our legal counsel. And I really regret doing that. It is not the first time that this board, and I don't mean this board, but the Select Board itself, because it wasn't constituted with the same members, have denied a petition. It is something rarely done, and it is only because of a conflict with law that we are going to perhaps proceed with this or at least consider this vote and then move on. That's just generally what I wanted to say. Does anyone else want to speak to the motion?
I guess I would like to just reply to that. John and I were the authors of a previously denied petition that came before a Select Board. And I believe that Bruce and Chris were sitting on the board at the time. It was very disappointing to be sitting in the audience and have a vote come out that went against your petition. We were told that it was because it was illegal to do it that way. It violated state law because what we were asking for would need a charter to be in place, and our town doesn't have a charter. At that time, my real problem with the decision was that it was never discussed with us. We turned the petition in. There was no public airing of it. There was no discussion. A motion was made. The vote was taken, and it was all done. And I understand, sitting on the side and hearing, that something isn't going through. John and I researched it and found out that the Select Board was correct. It did violate what they said it would. So we went about it in a different way. And I think we've all come to an agreement that we're doing a pretty good thing here with the outcome of that, which was all about the budget process. I think what's different this time is that there's been a lot of conversation. There's been a lot of opportunity for conversation to take place. There have been public hearings. The fact that something's being asked for that we believe is illegal is what we have to deal with. And I am not acting in any sort of a partisan way.
Thank you. Any other members of the board? Seeing none?
I feel pretty much, you know, what Catherine has said. It is disappointing to have a petition turned down. There's a lot of work that goes into it. But, you know, it is what it is, bottom line. We have to follow legal advice. If we don't, then we shouldn't get legal advice and pay for it. So I hold high the knee.
Then let's move to the vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? No. Petition is rejected. We'll proceed now with a second...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please. Just very quickly, a clarification.
But can you go to the mic so we can all hear?
Catherine, go to the mic.
Thank you, Bob.
I researched that law myself and the petition. And I found absolutely declarative information that the Select Board could rezone one lot if it wanted to, and so could the people in any town in Maine.
Bob, what is your question, please?
The question is, he said there are several laws that this would violate. I'd like to know what they are. I'd like to see, I'd like you to tell me and tell the audience what laws have been violated by this.
Bob, what I'm not going to do is go through the packet, which is a public document. You can look at it online and you can read the attorney's findings. So it is available, and it's available there.
That attorney also said...
Okay, now we're getting into a back and forth, which I really don't want to do.
Oh, no, no. This attorney has also said that my small events that were being held there were in violation, and I have his document that said that, in violation of mass gatherings, 100 people, 500 people, and that I should be censured for that. So he's obviously said some things that were incorrect before.
Bob?
I'd like to know what it was, and I'd like this committee to also look at it a little more carefully in terms of maybe other legal information before you betray the will of the people of this town.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with the rest of the agenda. And we're going to go to 19-037, which is to conduct a second reading of the new and revised cemetery policies and regulations. I apologize, I was not at the last meeting. So Floyd's presenting that second reading. I've read it.
We did speak with the cemetery committee, yeah.
Alan?
Andy?
Andy, Andy, can I speak? Hi, Andy.
Andy, before you get started, I just have a... I don't know if this will help, but have, has the committee made any changes since we read this at our last meeting?
We may. We corrected two typos that were brought to our attention.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
But, you know, this is, you know, the substance is identical. So the substance is identical.
Okay.
And some of the confusion, I think, at the last meeting is that there's also a really beautiful packet that's been prepared by the town office that has some material that isn't in here. that isn't in here. But, you know, what we're asking for you to consider is this, whatever it is, page document. And it's broken down into kind of an overview of what the cemeteries are about, how we're organized, that you folks are in charge, we offer you advice, the sexton carries out the work with the help of a lot of other folks. We talk at some length about perpetual care and ground maintenance and encouraging and managing volunteers. And then we have kind of two, a set of regulations and a set of rules. The regulations have to do with selling lots and putting people in them. And the rules have to do with the conduct of folks who are visiting the cemeteries and who are helping us maintain the graves. And in both cases, we spent a lot of time and went around and around, both looking at other people's rules and our old rules and kind of the experience in the cemeteries, and tried to be as reasonable as we could, allowing people to, you know, celebrate their, folks who had passed on, but also keeping the cemeteries in a way that we could maintain them effectively. So there, you know, there's nothing magic about these, the, the magic piece is that we did pass the ordinance, and now you folks can approve the rules. So we don't have to try to run the minutia of the rules past the entire electorate anymore. But if they have opinions, we can always revise them, too.
Yes. I have two questions, maybe they're more requests, and I just have them in front of me. Under number three, perpetual care, it says include a link for the ordinance here. I assume that that's if it's on the website, we would have the link, or are you going to put the link in?
In the, the hard document? No, those are hard to click on. I know. But yes, the intent was that this would be posted on the website, and it would be a good place to cross-link to the controlling ordinance.
Okay. And then down towards the bottom is number five under cemetery regulations, oh, come on. It says effective question mark 2018. Would that be, if we approve it, we'll be putting today's date in with that? Is that what the intention is there?
That was the intent, that whenever you guys were happy with it, you could put a date on it, and then we'd, we'd know when to start thinking about it.
Great. I would make a motion to approve the cemetery, I'll get the right name here, the cemetery policies as presented.
Second minute. My question to the board is, should we put that effective date in, in there?
May I amend my motion? Okay, John. I would make a motion to approve the cemetery policies as presented, effective today.
10/29.
Eighteen.
And I'll approve that. I'm not going to take it as an amended, amended, uh.
We'll make it a remade motion.
It's just going to be a remade motion.
Because we didn't second the other one.
I think it's pretty simple.
I mean, we didn't vote on it.
My additional question on the rules is, does that include all the pricing?
Sorry?
Does that include the pricing of lots?
It does, yeah. And now you, you clearly are, you are the decision makers on that. If you want to charge more, that's.
Okay, so the pricing, this is, this is not a change in pricing?
No.
Because I would think we would want to give notice to people in regards to that.
But we don't have the, we don't have it in?
Well, and as a policy, the, it can be changed at any point in time without us approving anything.
No, we do have, we do have a 400, the current price is $400 a lot.
Right.
Now, that's a.
It's been that for a long, long time.
And I think at your, at your choice, you know, it could go up because, you know, it does cost money to provide perpetual.
So my question in general was, that's a separate action? Okay, so I, I just needed to understand that.
Maybe the cemetery committee could talk it over and come up with a recommendation, if they have one, on any.
Yeah, they should advise us of any pricing changes, obviously. I think we've been in this pricing mode for dozens of years, maybe even.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, we, we have a motion on the floor, and I'm kind of getting us off topic, so now we'll deal with the motion. Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to thank the cemetery committee. I know how much work you folks put in, not, not just with policy and with, you know, the paperwork and all that stuff, but physically, there's a lot of work that goes into our cemeteries, a lot in fixing stones and cleaning cemeteries. They do a human's job, and they, they're real replaceable, really. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll relay that to those who aren't here. We'll go ahead and take the vote. All in favor? Second reading is.
Awesome. Andy, I'll get in touch with you about the next scheduled, the select board needs to look at some other fee schedules as well.
Okay. We'll see if we can roll them all in.
Try to coordinate, yeah.
So I guess I better buy my cemetery plot now.
We're going to see a run on that.
Get them quick before they go up.
I'll be in tomorrow.
The second reading puts the policy into, into effect as of 10/29. So we'll now move on to new business, and we have in front of us tonight the first draft budget and warrant schedule. And I guess what I would probably say, first of all, I'll let Eric speak to it, but momentarily, but I would say there may be some adjustments in dates early on as we look forward to. I don't know if you successfully navigated all the holidays, or if I'll catch you out again or something on that, but.
I could, I put a bigger wage on it this year than last, that I did, that I did catch all those, but still, I'm sure that we will have some adjustments to make as we go through this.
So you're really looking for consensus advisory from the board tonight to proceed with this schedule. We probably don't need a motion, but general consensus and any questions on it that may, that may be there.
Yeah, and I'll just say that I went through, I did get a copy of the school calendar. I tried to avoid any and all school holidays, religious holidays, federal state holidays. And I think that we have a really good basis shaped much like last year's process, but I did work in some more time in between a few of the key decision points and public meetings, so that if in the event, which we almost always do, we have changes as a result of public input and public feedback, we're then more able to accurately put those into the budget and the presentation materials for the subsequent public meetings. So I did try to space out the last month or so of this process a little bit better and still maintain the timeframes necessary to meet the statutory deadlines, the 100 days and 60 days and 10 days, all of those ones that are in bold for, for the process that we have. I do need to make an effort to discuss this with Rob and our town clerk to make sure there are no issues on her end, but I, I think that given how closely this hews to last year's schedule and the, the changing being of our meetings, not necessarily the substantive time, timeline, that I think we're in a little bit better position than we were last year, but still very much looking at a fairly lengthy, thorough budget process.
Thank you, Eric. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the difference between the 3/28 meeting and the 5/16 meeting, which are highlighted on this, at least on the copy that I have.
Yes.
The first one is actually a hearing on the budget proposed where we may be making changes to the budget at that point, based on public feedback from that hearing.
Absolutely. That would be the, the, one of the most prominent opportunities.
It's not actually a hearing, it's a meeting.
Public budget meeting, yes, you're right.
Whereas the second one should not be listed as a meeting. It's really just a hearing.
You're right, that's exactly my point. The second one is the budget warrants have been set, and we'll hear people saying, yea, this should pass, or nay, it should not pass.
That's on May 16.
That would be on the May 16. So I just, there's always been confusion around those two meetings, and I just want to make sure that as we proceed in the budget process, that anything we can do to help the public understand that the difference between the two meetings is just important to do.
Yeah, well, I think that's a good point about the, the word meeting. I'll drop that from the second and try to distinguish perhaps that way by referencing the first one as a meeting and the second one, I guess, as a hearing, although I think that your, your explanation upfront is probably the best one we can give, that the first one really is for an open opportunity to discuss, recommend, and deliberate, whereas the second meeting very much is just to explain and educate the results.
For somebody to come to the second meeting and want to tell us about a change, it's way too late.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
They have to come in March, yeah.
Or February, or January, yeah.
So I guess after, it says public budget meeting on the 3/28 line, I'd like it, I'm making a suggestion, public budget meeting for hearing for public input? To express public input?
Okay, yeah. I'll wordsmith it a little bit, yeah, yeah.
And then the second one is public budget hearing to explain the warrant.
Informational hearing? The second one is called the informational hearing?
Yeah, informational.
Is that what it asks, I think? The second one?
Well, it is informational, but at the same time, residents can get up and say, this should pass, or this shouldn't pass, and here's why I think it should pass, or, or shouldn't pass. So it is a floor meeting. So we want to make sure that we do that.
It holds no weight, but people can express.
Yeah, we'll wordsmith this a little bit. So is there general consensus among the board members that this is a fairly good process and that the town manager with as further input comes, this is basically our working framework?
Yes. I have one question.
Sure.
I think in the past, we've been doing the capital investment plan review earlier, like November, December, and now it's kind of after you've heard all of the things. Is there a reason for that?
Well, I think that was when we had our actual public hearing on it. Last year, we had two meetings on this. We did, as we were trying to pull the process together, have a precursor to really get our, get our act together as far as how we looked at, discussed, and planned to execute that capital investment. So I think that, I think what you were calling was those two meetings from the prior year, where the first one was more of an organizational meeting and discussion about the really nuts and bolts of this, and the second was more of an explanation to the public. We could take a look at that again, do a similar process where we have something more of a workshop, and then have the, the more public meeting where we discuss and present this stuff in a more polished way. I guess I see that as being something that we had done a fairly good job with last year, so I did take that other one out, but.
I'm okay with that. I just wanted to hear justification.
It's the difference between the nuts and bolts versus the presentation and discussion, so.
Okay.
We could do it either way. I think that there's value in having it, although I'm looking at this and saying there's a lot of meetings here, but.
I'm okay with it the way it is. I just wanted to know why it was going that way.
So I guess we're, we're set with this. Andy, since you're here, do you see anything that jumps out at you that you would want to go to the microphone and quickly address?
And why would we be asking, Andy?
Because he's the chair of the budget committee.
Just for the public.
Want to borrow my?
Yeah, no, that's, the only, I did read it at home about, yeah, the, on a personal level, the only one piece that I will have to, to work around to make work are the Tuesday meetings, because I usually go to chorus that night, but I don't have to sing. I'm going to dance.
And those are just placeholders. I'll make that very clear, that the Thursdays and the Tuesday meetings for the budget committee were based on last year's schedule that worked best.
Depending on who we end up with on the committee, we want to minimize the conflicts for them, I agree.
Exactly, so those are placeholders.
But in terms of the, kind of the, the big building blocks, this looks reasonable to me, you know, as long as we all now know where we're going on the capital investment plan, which I think we pretty much do.
So I would suggest that, of course, we have a couple of things that do occur in November, but by December, we have more hardcoded dates. So I think we're all set with that item.
This is going to be on the website, and will paper copies be available for the public? Eric?
Yeah, this will be, this is one of our main avenues for advertising, the, the overall schedule of the process, opportunities for input. And I'll say, you know, these are all public meetings. Every single one of these meetings, unless it's a deadline or some other criteria, is a public meeting where people can come and present and discuss the budget overall and have an impact on the budget over the majority of these meetings, I think. So there's real opportunities here, and this is what we put out at the post offices, on our town website here. We'll make sure these are all very well notified. And we didn't last year have our website fully up and running. So this year, we will, we will be able to put out notices to the email listserv, the email database we have for residents. So if anybody would like to get this sent out, you know, when we send the notice for the meeting, every, every week or so before these meetings, please go and sign up on our, our website for the email notifications and just click on the budget information. And we will be putting this out on a regular basis, and folks will get notified as these things are happening, so.
And people really need to get involved in this budget process. I mean, the dates are all here. Come to the meetings, get educated. I know sometimes it's intimidating, but, you know, I, I thought that before I got involved. And I've served on budget committees and now on the select board, and what's, what's disappointing is when, after the vote in late June, people, I'll see people and they'll say, well, you know, I, I really didn't like this, or I didn't like that, but did you show up at any of the hearings or the meetings? Well, no. Okay, we, if we don't know, we can't, we can't consider anything. I mean, that's not to say that if, you know, Joe Public comes up and says, we don't want this, that we're going to vote against it. I mean, it, you know, obviously, there's a lot of reasons behind budgets, budget items, but please get involved.
I guess I have one question. On 5/2, it says the final budget review and approval for the budget committee, but hasn't the select board already made the budget finalized on the 22nd of April?
Let me look at that. 4/22.
Wouldn't they want to be the, switched?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll look at that. I think we did have some issues with that last year as well, with the scheduling and who, who got the last word.
I remember right, the budget committee had to meet after us.
They did, because you guys made a change. That's what it was. So that, that's why this is put in that way.
Okay. You're right.
Andy's bad.
You're right. I know we go back and forth, so we will, when they see the budget on May 2nd, the warrant will already be fixed, but if we had changed something, they can choose to vote.
Because.
They will need to revote to accept any changes, either yea or nay.
Their advisory to you, but their vote is still required, so if you change something, you have the ability to, they can't change the budget, they can just vote to accept it or, or recommend it or not. So that's why that, thank you, Andy, and thank you for helping remember why that was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to 19043, which is the schedule upcoming meetings, holidays, and town office closures. This is not really meetings, it's.
Closures.
Closures and just, just schedule going forward.
Is this just info?
This is for information only, really.
Well, it is. In the past, the board has had more of an active role in reviewing and considering what days the, the town office may close early for a holiday, or the one example here, I mean, typically, we take a half day before New Year's or before Christmas, and that is something that is not guaranteed in the collective bargaining agreement, but it's something that has been done traditionally, where the, the town office closes half a day early to folks take vacation time or floating holidays, and they use that. So this, this is to be a bit more formal than we've been in the past about some of those events, so the, the board is fully aware, and the public is fully aware of what happens there. And there are some unique situations this year. In December, Christmas falls on a Tuesday, which means that it would be a bit, I won't say uncomfortable, but people probably won't want to come in on Monday, the day before.
Especially for a half a day.
For a half a day. So the thought was. So the thought was that rather than schedule a half a day as we normally do, we would just close for the day and offer that extension as a closure for the employees.
And that's not a paid day off unless they use vacation time?
Yeah, yeah, they would have the option of using vacation time. It would not be a paid holiday, I'll put it that way.
But they would know in well in advance that they would need that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So this is, the idea here is to give the employees a bit of advance notice, to let the Select Board and the public know, and to just make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to scheduling some of these unique things that happen, and making sure that, you know, you are okay with us closing the office for a day on a Monday when Christmas is on Tuesday.
Has there been employee input on this?
I've spoken with a few members of the staff, and they actually.
Use pretty much all the staff, right?
Well, yeah. I've spoken with the office staff. This doesn't necessarily affect, like, for example, the Monday closure wouldn't affect the transfer station staff. So I have talked with the office staff, and they are usually the ones that suggest these early closures or half days. And I think it's a reasonable thing to accommodate that when we can, because we're having fairly low activity levels, and it is a nice benefit.
So do you want an approval from the Select Board tonight to approve this schedule?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Before we do that, I have a couple comments.
Please do.
Okay. I think I'm pretty good at reading these kinds of things, and it took me a couple times through to figure this out. I would like a different symbol used for the Saturday after Thanksgiving, because it looked to me like the transfer station was going to be closed half a day on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, opening again on Tuesday, until I finally figured out that, okay, wait a minute, they're going to be open on the Saturday, even though the town office is closed on the Friday. So I don't know, I think I know why we do that.
Yeah, it was one of the quirks of the collective bargaining.
Right. But if we could just make it clear, and so then I realized that, okay, we're looking for these bold, outlined days for something. Oh, right, then the top one, I couldn't really see, and I didn't know if that was just my scanned copy, but federal and state holidays. And we didn't list all of them. We are only looking at Thanksgiving, Christmas on both years? Or are the others actually marked somewhere?
We should have all 12 holidays identified here. Let's see. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Yep. So.
They're shaded. They might not be coming through.
The shading did not come through.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I'm just looking at that going, well, that's really interesting.
That's what it should look like in print copy, yeah.
Okay. Yes, so if we're going to put, if this were to be posted online, we would not be able to shade. You'd have to put something else in there, because it didn't pick up.
Some color or something.
Okay, sure.
It won't come through.
Okay. So, yes, I'm happy now. Thank you. No wonder I was confused.
Let's take a motion to approve or adjust this as you see fit.
I would make a motion to approve the upcoming holiday enclosure calendar effective November 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2019.
Second?
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? My only input would be, obviously, there could be a change down the road, and that would require, because we've moved and seconded it, it would require a motion to do so. So just an FYI. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Nobody moved until that.